Welcome. I want to welcome you to Elizabeth and the leading committee of the whole meeting dated Monday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty four, six P. M. in council chambers will call this meeting to the order. Can I get a mover and secondary for the adoption of the gentleman? Now, so now I'm council.
I'm just a point where if I can suggest that it be adopted as amended, because I see that there are a couple of additions and then some were put on there, at least the symbols are there, so I would suggest that be the case.
Okay. I don't know. As amended, please. All those in favor? Okay, is there any disclosure that I trust? Seen any, so we've been the staff reports. For corporate service and minister finance and governance, report four point one, eight twenty four fifty nine, the declare of council seat being vacant. Can I get a mover and secondary get that on table or counts? You're also hot and caps. And anybody like to have any comments on that report?
We go on that start first and then come back to us.
Absolutely, it was an all their question.
I don't have any comments other than what was in the staff report, just in case there is any confusion, the municipal elections act is quite prescriptive in that declaring the seat vacant is the first task and then deliberating on the options. With respect to the length of vacancy or set is a separate discussion, which is why this report has come forward this evening, and I have anticipate bringing forward the secondary report to cancel next Tuesday.
So through you chair to our minister, do you want the? Our input at the next meeting or?
That's correct.
I'll say bye.
I think we should just say no. Oh, so we were just rejecting the.
Thanks.
They're so bad now. Well, we're gonna keep them here, but I don't think it's gonna work. Right. So this was that the report eight twenty four fifty nine declared councils and bacon be received and that the committee of all recommend that council with township of boys down tightly. Except the resignation of council Tom Linton effective November first, two thousand and twenty four, and declare a vacancy of the office counselor and that the administrator be directed to bring your corporate and nothing to fill the council seat in accordance with the municipal election act. All those in favor? That is good. Moving on to four point two, twenty four sixty one, addressing private roads or plus. That report twenty four sixty one, this private roads association request be received and that the committee of the hall recommend that council and the township of was without kidney off by staff received with the development of a private road funding policy for consideration of future meeting. Again, I'm lowering second to get that one. Now, I want and council. Anybody have any other comments from staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just wanted to thank staff for doing their research on this and no problem with the recommendation that's being made, I think. We've demonstrated a willingness to try and be helpful to the residents, obviously, the legislation doesn't allow us to do that, and there's some liability concerns as well, so I think we landed at a decent spot and demonstrated a good faking process, so thanks for that.
Also.
I'm clear through you to our administrator. Probably through all your digging of former policies, did we not, did the municipal not have a private rules? It was just a verbal agreement that we had in place. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
So I have that option two. Um, no, sorry. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so okay. We asked them though, actually, two would just receive the information, so you can speak on it.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion, uh, entertain option two. Uh, I don't think that we should be getting the township should be getting into the private roads and looking after their money, we have enough trouble looking after the public money. And that's private money, and I think they should be able to look after themselves. So therefore, I make an emotion to accept. Option two, which is receive the information.
Just for clarification, I just, uh, councillor Brighton, the legislation does not permit us to actually be the banker for the private road funds, so option one was just to reiterate that the legal advice received was that we wouldn't be proceeding with that option. But because we do allocate tax, part of a tax levy to fund private roads, that we should ultimately have a policy. So option was was to direct staff to formalize what's actually taking place into a policy.
I still believe that we shouldn't be keeping those sorts out, shouldn't be dealing around private roads.
Council. We've always. Oh, sorry. You got it, sorry.
Thanks, Madam Chair, just through you, councillor Brighton, I believe in that as that moves forward, if that's the case, that we put that in there in that in that next. That is I'm hearing that correctly, so we're dealing with the, we can't be the banker, because that was your question, you looked at before and learned for. Or we can't, that's the answer back, and then at a further meeting, you'll get the chance to put in those rules to that.
I put in that.
Okay, anyways, it's all good.
And it's also to get in writing what we are already doing, and we have been doing for the last. How long have I been on council for the years? Um, we've always given money. If you have an association, if you have the bill, blah, blah, blah. But there's been nothing in writing, I'm sure we have, but obviously they couldn't find it, so there's nothing in writing and. Staff is correct, we need it in writing.
I think it should be in writing, I'm like, because this is not first time.
No, no, but if they can't find it, you just need to do it.
Yeah.
Thank you, and that's part of the reason why I asked the question, because I do recall council today, we did bump up the amount of money provided to the private roads.
It's starting out at fifteen.
It's based on a per kilometer, but anyways. I do call, we call it the council, they discussed this, and that's why I asked the question, is there anything in writing, there has to be somewhere, somewhere. Under the.
Madam Chair, I, I think, I think what we'll find is that there are likely, because I remember some of this discussion before we came there. I think likely we'll find motions in the minute that talk to the amount being adjusted, but I'm not so sure that I ever recall hearing about a policy referred to review or have used the actual policy itself may not exist. Even though the discussions over the finances do historically exist, I think that's where we landed, so this is more a cleanup item than anything else.
So what I'm hearing is we're back to option one. All those in favor of option? Moving on to. Four point three, twenty four sixty two, needs county O P P detachment board, community member appointments. I need a mover and a secondary for the Leeds County Open P detachment board, be number one, so you receive in that committee of the hall recommend that the county of the township. Elizabeth Towne, that we approved the recommendation of the Leeds County Open P detachment board to appoint the following individuals to the board as at large community member, Ms. Catherine Brown and Mr. Todd Robertson. I think the movers second bit. You staff to make yourself.
Nothing to add, this is just to formalize in accordance with the Community Safety and Policing Act, each member municipality of the Leeds County detachment is required, much like we did with the. Board member remuneration a few weeks ago, they're required to adopt the. The recommendation of the board with respect to the community employment, so these two individuals have have come out of a thorough work.
That's great.
Thank you. Where do these two people come from? I never heard tell them before.
They, so they live, they had to reside within the detachment of the Leeds County, so I think both of them actually come from Leeds and Thousand Islands. Um. But the geography for the community members could be in our municipality or could be within Leeds County.
So they're within the county.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Councillor Snell?
Just the. These were clarification. Um. I don't understand why we are. Voting or accepting these individuals, so did not every municipality who's in the detachments. You got the mayor representative, you have a public at large member as well, or was it just a wide open? Code set.
Yeah, so back in two thousand and twenty one, when the solicitor general's office approved the creation of the Leeds County Detachment Board, they approved a nine member, the composition of nine members, so seven elected members, so each municipality could only. Submit a name for an elected representative, two members at large, and then the province will appoint two members, so these are the two at large members, and then the act requires that each of the seven member municipalities have to support.
All right, that's what I wanted to hear, okay, all right, that's why I asked the question when you find out they're not from here.
Yes.
Why are we having much to say with it? Okay, that's fine.
Who picked these two people?
The board, the elected members of the board, so Mayor Borough is the township representative and also the chair of the board, so they held a recruitment, there was. Eleven members appointed, they narrowed it down to. Five members and then off, yeah, the five members, they undertook interviews.
Pretty impressive resume. Thanks, Madam Chair, but yeah, just briefly on the council, I was a comment about pretty impressive resumes. The entire field of applicants that we started with was robust, and then when we narrowed it down to the five, those five had equally impressive resumes, and then it went through an in-person interview process and. And in the end, the decision became easier and easier, but along the way, it was a difficult sort of weeding process. We were in an enviable position where we sort of were able to pick the cream of the crop. I'm very pleased with the way that all went.
Well, we should be seeing you in that blue shirt.
No, no, definitely, I'm on the civilian side of things.
Thank you.
Maybe the mayor can answer this, I'm not sure, so for all the money that we're going to send between municipalities and counties. What's about it?
Well, right now, we have no formal relationship with the O P P, not as formal as this framework provides. I think what we'll be able to do is certainly provide some direction through the detachment commander, you know, I don't know about you, I get nothing about speeding and so on all the time. That's obviously going to be a topic of conversation, I guess, give us a year and I'll be able to provide you with a much more robust answer. But when all said and done, this was legislated, it was a requirement, so you don't have much choice, I hope we get some value out of it, I think we will, and going into it with a positive attitude and we'll make the best of it.
I hope we do, because I don't see it, we always had the ability, we did the O P P to do speed traps, we always had that ability, we can talk to them, they come and. Make reports when we requested, like, I'm not seeing that there's going to be a huge benefit here for the cost, I don't know why the province is showing this down our throat, it's a little bit ridiculous. When it's not necessary. But there you go.
And so, and do we have, you have. Three, four meetings a year? You said, it said to start with every. Quarter.
Yeah, so, so through, through you, Madam Chair, yeah, the minimum would be quarterly. We do anticipate in this first year, as we sort of bootstrap ourselves and get the board up and functioning, there might be half a dozen or four, seven meetings, but it should settle out to four, maybe five meetings in a year on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, I, I think I did say prior to this tonight, then. What good is four meeting a year, what are you going to get out of it, but anyway, you probably get something.
Well, on that note, all those in favor? And that's very. Right along four point four. Uh, report eight twenty four sixty three, the funny Toledo Senate tap repair, I need a mover and a secondary for that. Now, so now I'm councillor. There's three options for this one, option one is to authorize a contribution towards the repairs with Senate tap in Toledo to an offset limit of five thousand dollars to be funded from strategic initiative reserve. Option two, authorize a contribution towards the repairs in Senate tap in Toledo to an offset limit of blank. Amount of money to be determined by council to be funded from the strategic initiative reserve, or option three receives information. My good segment. Is there anyone else that would like to be a deeper comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I was speaking with. One of the representatives of the Toledo Legion, they're going to be having a meeting very shortly to sort of confirm and ratify this, but. They would be quite happy to be sort of the lead of the project, if you will, from, from the financial standpoint, the advantage is that. They're in a position to recover all of the H S D associated with the project, whereas municipalities, I think it's one point eight seven, it's about two percent. Uh, that we end up paying, we're only paying eleven percent, so there was discussion back and forth between myself and the Legion representative, either way is fine, whatever council feels. Feels comfortable with, but that is an option to allow the Legion to actually accept the invoice and look after the financial side of things, and then we make our contribution, whatever that may be, out of the next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I am. Went to thinking that. Them. That we should. Test off and pay the ten grand or whatever, loving them boys left to fight for our freedom and never come back. And. It's the time of year that, that we think a lot of them. There was a lot of families affected, a lot of young boys affected, and. I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be hurting the, pay the ten grand.
Thanks, through you, Madam Chair, just to clarify. The, the project is only approximately five thousand, I think the, the estimate was fifty five hundred plus H S D.
Oh, no, well, it's five grand.
Yeah, so, and, and the other thing that's important to note is, in, in my discussions with the representative from the Legion. They felt very committed like you did, and so they would like to make a contribution for the same reason, so I would hate to say, look, you know, council wants to cover the entire cost, and I think we should graciously accept. Their participation, which is only going to amount to a few hundred dollars in the end.
Yeah.
But I think the symbolism of allowing the Legion to participate in that for all those same reasons is, is important, so I think the recommendation, the way it is, is sensitive to all those things, and I'm very comfortable with what's in front of us.
I agree.
And allowing them to take the lead on it. Their hands on the right there, it would, it would mean so much to them to have that. I think that would be nice.
Just, just for clarity, and. From previous discussion, I think the financial administrator referred to that, we get some H S T, we can claim the hack on our expenses.
That's correct.
Now, if the. The Legion takes care of it, do they get the H S T back?
All of it, whereas we only get a portion.
That was the information.
Yes.
Quite thirty H S T, all right, thank you, I'm good.
Now, thank you, I know that a few years ago, we didn't, we paid for a little snack work up there, and. Put a smile on everybody's face that looked at it, and they did a good job and, and I'm sure that the Legion will. Be up for the passion again.
Now. All those in favor?
Well, I'm sorry about. You're trying to give him ten grand and then he won't talk.
Moving on, building plane development, report eight twenty four sixty proposed campus with town development at Ralph's Corners update. Uh, this is just to receive the report, I need a mover and a secondary please. Councillor, and council. Did anyone have any further comments? Or questions, not seen any, all those in favor? Just Gary. We on B twenty four ten, the former Lynn Mall, building inspector and facility ranger, Jason Martin's report. So the report is that the former fire hall we received and that the committee of the hall discussed the possible demolition and or options for the former fire hall located at twenty six Main Street Westland and provide direction to staff, I need a mover and secondary to get that one. Councillor Smith and Councillor.
Yeah, Jason taking the lead, so we can certainly, yeah.
Uh, so we have an engineering report done in two thousand and twenty by D D G Engineering that has abangaded the building. Uh, there's considerable mold throughout it, and the roof has been leaking for a considerable amount of time, as well as. Sites of raccoons coming and going as they please, and with the storage in there and all the utilities being abandoned and disconnected, there isn't much salvageable except for possibly the, the concrete shell of it. And structure. Um, there's a bit of foundation and footing issue on the ones corner that's getting wet, and some findings are heaving and frosting and moving. Resulting in structural issues. So I've, I've been out with several contractors and I've gotten several quotes to demolish the building and relocate the plumbing, the, the well that's feeding the ball diamond. And that's just kind of where we are with it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to. Um, what, what are the quotes, what are they for?
Uh, to basically remove it to the foundation. Uh, and the lowest one I got was twenty five thousand dollars to remove the building. I, I've gotten two others considerably larger than that. Uh, almost ten times, one of them was so almost ten times that amount, and then I had one about forty thousand dollars as well. I, yes, the. I had done some hazardous substance testing when we did the A R O for with Christine, and I did. The samples in for asbestos and determined that there was no asbestos in the building, and, but G, uh, G I M that was the lowest cost would take it to a secure facility. Areas to make sure that if there is hazard substance, that there being a little problem.
Do some good follow up, so just for clarity, so if for the twenty five grand, they completely remove it, they completely remove it in the, in the well.
Yes, that is an additional cost, I've had a rough figure to move the well and the electrical service to the old storied building in the dugouts. Or on the ballpark side, that way it's in. The, the ballpark competing, the pavilion, uh, canteen area, yeah, uh, approximately ten thousand dollars to do the well and the electrical service.
Uh, thank you, through you, the chair to Jason, so thanks for the report, some stuff doesn't surprise to me, yeah, the building's been sitting vacant for almost twenty four years, twenty three years and change. And you mentioned about the demolition. Is. Is the old fire hall, we have that severed off from the recreation property? Or is it part and parcel of the recreational property?
It appears to be together with the parks property.
Okay. So there's a couple of things going through my mind, one is based on the information that's provided to us, demolition is probably the route to go. Um, but we, we would want to take on that responsibility and have that. Those issues. Uh. As anyone would know, the, the park itself there does need additional parking, and since we own the property, if the building was demoed. We could extend the parking lot, as you know, the mailboxes are already on our property there. Or, um, we could turn around and sell the, if we could, if we could sever off the old fire hall from the residential land. Uh, sell off as is on a sealed. Bid. Um, that's just another option to put out there, I know there are some feelers out there, there's a couple of people approached me about it, but. Uh, I made the comment very clear to them that I'd rather see the report before we, we're beginning that discussion. But as a, as a councillor, as, as the township representative, I don't think we want to want these hazards, and I think we probably will want demolish it, but that's a, it's special for all of council. Unless they have another idea. I'm throwing two ideas out there, I just don't know if we can sever, number one, uh, if we did, then, then the services would still have to be relocated. Uh, or, or a new well drill for the ball diamond, there's, there's some other, you know, balls up in the air, but thanks for the report, I just think that this is now a. A better step in the right direction compared to what we had before.
I would agree. Uh, with demolition, for sure. But. I can't see severing off that small piece of property for someone, and why would they want it? It started with a small house. And would you want your house on top of the park, we need parking in the village. We could be parking for anybody in the village, or we could park, we could keep going to the ball diamond, it's a ball now. Uh, it, it. I don't know that I'd want to sever it off, it's not that big a piece, that's terrible.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just one other question on the. Would the saving the well have any effect if we're going to go parking lot?
It would still be in the middle of the parking lot, we would have to cover the wellhead somehow in protectives, because it would be a hazard in within the parking lot, and on that note, actually, like you mentioned before. They are, the quote is to remove the building, but we would have to restore the, the ground at some level, so whether it's gravel. Or grading it off, that's not included in that quote, we would have to, we would be responsible for that afterwards.
Thank you, I was suspect our firm budget, like, this wasn't budgeted for, and we have room for, like. We have an update, are we behind as a budget, are we ahead, or is there room to use?
I don't want to actually speak for Christine, and we haven't actually done a Q three formal assessment at this point, but I don't know why to ask Jason, is this something that could be included, is it okay to, if demolition was the preferred route? To call, to wait and budget for it in two thousand and twenty five?
Absolutely, like, just assuming the risk of the cost, the cost going between now and then. But I don't see why that would be an issue.
Councillor Brighton?
This chair. You say it's twenty three or twenty two year, five years ago. Well, twenty three or twenty three and a half years ago, it should have been tore down then. We've been getting, uh, getting rent out of it. Getting rent out of it. Since we've got the new fire hall, it's one dollar a year. Don't forget that, one dollar a year. Uh, and it's just been a mess ever since. And I think it was a mess when they when they closed the doors and then used it for a storage building. So I would like to see it go and. And spurs uh spurs uh well. I think that we can put a. Building over the well and hydro limit to service a canteen. Or whatever it is, you'll have taller. So I would be for tearing it down.
Well, this is what October? You get it tore down in November? We don't get paid until January, it's twenty-five?
Just just a comment on the well situation. Might be uh a good idea to do a test on the well and if that's not. I think you'd be in more of a danger of the well.
It would be a lot cleaner site and it would be more convenient to have the well load in closer to the ballpark. If that was the option, if you wanted to pour gold across a new well. That would be a lot cleaner scenario than relocating the wellhead to that other building.
Yeah.
Thanks.
In this direction, demolition ability goes along.
Well, I think we just need verification on the on the timing because right now the report is open ended. We heard that it could be the demolition could take place in twenty twenty-five. The budget indication. So I think we just need to put a bow on that. Are we directing that is done this year or we directing that it will be done next year and pull it into the budget?
I would I would suggest we fold it in with budget for twenty twenty-five.
Does that prevent it from being done this year?
That's correct. It it's not a, I'm sorry, I'll. Follow up. Um, just my my opinion, it's not right now about falling down on us. Is it going to perfectly leave it next year? No, we learn from a building factory now. They can say that to next year and haven't done that.
But the estimate to do the work might not be valid.
Might might not be the same.
And the other opinion is that uh the museum is still using it for storage and there are a lot of materials in there that would have to be relocated. So if it was going to be this year, we'd have to give them some time to make sure they benefit some of that.
Alright, demolition twenty twenty-five. All those in favor? You want more things to say?
One more point, as Counselor Loosertrop and as Bert and our building inspector just alluded to. We later put in writing to the uh Heritage Place Museum Board that there's nothing to be removed out. Not wait till uh the day we want to do it. I'm sure Jason wouldn't do that. I'm just saying. I think it's just courtesy that I don't know what kind of agreements, if there is. When states, we have to give them thirty days or sixty days or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, well, just what Rob was saying, I think we should put January first. Have a January first because if we're putting it in twenty twenty-five budget, they could actually do it, you know, January second. And you can do that and that would keep our price probably at the same like. Then whether they wait, because you can tear a building down, it's not so nice to build one, but you can tear it down.
Yep.
Alright, Public Works Recreation Building Waste Management.
What number is that, Christine?
Four point seven, report twenty-four dash thirteen, fouling of township roads. A report for. Sorry, that was just we were putting a placeholder there because the report was added separately. Sorry. Sorry. So I need to move in a second there to get that on the floor. You want me to read what it is? The committee the whole recommend that the council of the township in Belizantown hit late, take appropriate action as outlined in the staff report. Create a bylaw to regulate the fouling of township roads. We have any further staff in?
I'm gonna support you and go back to your question. Counselor, you asked the question, what does fouling mean?
I apologize with the short term on the report. This this uh it I guess was triggered by an event that happened on Wednesday afternoon. Um, it's basically what happened with a lot of material placed on the road was created an unsafe condition. Um, so fouling as a definition would be creating detrimental or loss of use, I guess. Which we also have like a transport dump to load of toilet paper on four one. Okay, so uh so there are many cases for it to be around. The Public Works Department receives complaints regarding the fouling of township roads. This to be a result of dirt tracking by trucks and or machinery over the results of improperly secured loads. When materials are deposited on the road, they can create a nuisance as well as unsafe conditions for traveling public. The current procedure for road staff is to meet with the owner occupant of the property generated in concern. Often the request is to have the owner occupant have a road name or road staff due to work across the town. Beyond the cooperation of the owner occupants, staff have no means or no means to influence a change. Proposed by law provides for the regulation of the fouling of township roads and outlines a method of notification timelines. For remediation and consequences of non-compliance. So we had a with an unsafe road condition event on the afternoon of Wednesday, October second, twenty twenty-four. Please see the attached photos that. Can't bring them up, but I can see, does everybody have copy now? Uh, so the subject property was just off of Kenty Road. I. Apologize for my report. I revised it because I did have names in there, but I wanted to disclose them so we didn't. Call anybody out in public board. Uh, so it's farmed vacant farmland property and it is under the uh. Farm topic class tax program, so it is being actively farmed. And discussing with the public works staff and local residents, it was determined that this is not an uncommon occurrence at this and various locations within the township. Um, luckily for us, this is one of the good news pieces. Our public work staff responded very quickly and cleaned it up. They just. They got the call and when you did it, so we were all very lucky that they do that. Um, so when they became aware of the unsafe condition, they cleared the roadway for safe passage, the cost to respond. To to clear the road estimated around fifteen hundred dollars with three guys, three pieces of equipment. I know it was an overtime situation. Um, so typically agriculture vehicles and equipment are exempt from various departments within the highway traffic deck. As a road authority, this presents many challenges. Mechanism to recover costs associated with the above event does not exist. If it were a tractor trailer or private business, we would, our insurance company would then contact their insurance company and give recovery costs. But being an agricultural type business, we cannot do anything or recover any of the costs for the public work staff responding to the events. Um, so the township must assess risks versus liabilities. The township needs to balance the broader interest of all taxpayers to manage liability while being fair to the private sector industries. Utilize our road network to move and distribute goods and services. In the event of a road related claim due to unsafe conditions created by the depositing materials on the roadways. The township would be named as a party responsible in a legal suit. So I. Took a example from another municipality where they had a similar situation and created a draft bylaw for you guys to review. Recommendation is that you guys provide us with direction to execute said bylaw or a version thereof after you have discussed and delivered. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um. I appreciate uh the quick turnaround in the report and the detailed information in it. Um, for me, it's very important. You know, we have a couple of council members who are themselves very active farmers. I just, I want to make it clear that this is not an attack on on the farmers. I know that, you know, nobody is is doing that, but I just. I'm compelled to actually publicly state that this is not an attack on on farmers. Um. I think we have to work to get it to to figure out some kind of a solution because when you take a look at the the pictures. Leave a road like that even with normal farm practices and so on, that's not right either. So, you know, I think we need to engage with the farmers and the community to make them understand that. You know, this is something that we have to do for for all of our residents. It's not an attack on them if they have input. I don't know when to this particular uh field would. Would benefit from a culvert and a bit of a gravel entrance, but that's where this muck was being dragged from, was actually dragged from the from the field itself. But I think it's very important that we somehow at least engage our agricultural community uh so that so that they don't feel attacked because that's not what this is about. Thanks.
Kind of hard from these pictures to see just how much is on the road. Okay, um, so what is your? Versus six inches. You're gonna have to be really clear on. What? How?
Yeah, so that this would be just like a another tool for us to be able to use. Like obviously our first person action, if we could, would be have a conversation with the. Person or people that were involved and ask them to rectify themselves. I mean, through conversations, other people, farmers that have consulted to talk to. That they go and clean it themselves without having to be asked or they have in the past been asked and done it. But in this case, it was. When they noticed it happening is when it should have been rectified because we couldn't leave that. Like that because it was on an unsafe condition. So when they first noticed that it was doing it, is when they should have maybe sent a tracker and cleaned it off. It was just another tool for us to use versus having to go and ask them. And or and they might just say no and then we're stuck, but in the meantime, there's been an accident. It's just a surprise with a tool, they'll do it. Similar to what we're, you know, being proactive with their operating system of health and safety audits, we look for areas that we can prevent access from happening. We put tools and mechanisms in place so that we can deal with those when they arise and that's just what we're asking for this phase.
So we're gonna have to do an education program as well. To get it out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I'm uh most farmers are very appreciative of being able to use roads. And and we get stuck with founders and plenty of contract workers that come and do ten farmers, thirty farmers in a row and. It's our day today and rain yesterday. So we're, we can't stop harvest or or the delivery of mineral fields and uh. I think it boosts us to clean roads as best as we can. And but. For the six or eight or ten hour opportunity, the roads are okay. Could be, they could be. No, we have a conventional moist the deal is.
Right.
And uh it looked like this was a little bit too much.
Yes.
So I agree that needed to be remedied, uh worked on to it. So I think your efforts here are are good and and. And we want to be, I'm sure we all want to be equal taxpayers for using care of the property. So carry on.
Thank you, Derek. While I was processing my shop last year, it was on. The other side of the road you were talking about and uh it was in nine o'clock at night, it was dark. And it had been raining uh for about two days, but they were taking their corn off, which. They gotta do whatever they can do, when they can do it. I understand that. But there was so much stuff on the road. That were very. My wife, she was doing the driving and I was doing the riding. And she just about lost the car. And I talked to uh one of my farmer friends. And he said, there's no need of it, but they should have cleaned it off. But what I guess what you're doing is if they don't clean it up. We're protected to clean it off and do whatever. So I'm all for that and I appreciate it. Your time for getting that together, so. I. I know the problem.
In in a situation like this, if we are in a situation, we're we're the contractors in and we're gonna move on silently for next day now. Like, can we put a pile on others? Or is there something we can borrow so to give people a warning that? Condition may be different for one or two kilometers?
Yeah, by the way, you can always reach out to the public department trying to find places that have like T C P boards or like the big barrel cones or something like that.
We own an app for that support that we might have that just to give drivers a warning and then. We'll run by with a tractor with a front end loader as soon as we can and do the work, but it gives them the head up that pink orange or something is happening there and. Would you be able to do a phone call or a request for a couple?
Yeah.
Okay.
The game is you work with them. Next time we don't want to have to, you know, we're not gonna look to nail somebody with this and just to start charging people, but it's just when we have the. It's a it's a safety concern. It's kind of like ice, right?
Yeah. Like the only question was, if we add our own pile on, are we legally allowed to put a pile on like a couple hundred yards before and do it? Just let people know or or would it be better for sign from your public work department?
I'm not sure about the the galleys. Who can put a pile on on that? So I have to check and get that to on that.
Okay.
And I know it's really hard. It's like, I understand you guys operate very short. We're just gonna do it, but the key part. That you mentioned was it's a contractor going in and doing it and anytime in my previous uh other job experiences. Contractors are required to do certain things simply don't create this problem. So like they, the ministry puts in. Mandates we're gonna have like sediment or sediment inversion control and mud mats and specialized things for. Operations that may trap stuff onto a road. There isn't any place we'll do that with these types of situations, right? So that's the hard part.
Yeah, great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hate to have to think like this, but this is the world we live in and our duty is to protect the corporation. So the last thing I want to do is is prevent. Farm operator from being able to go and clean up their own mess because obviously that's the cheapest way for them to do it rather than pay our costs to to do it. Do we have any exposure that we need to be thinking about in terms of allowing somebody else to work on our roads? Is is there a liability risk that we need to factor into this decision-making process or are we okay letting other people work on our roads?
It depends on the timeframe, I guess, and how and when you want to do it, right? Like I mean, if if in this case, for example, if they had it. After the first couple loads, notice it and they had a tractor for it and then just be scraping it constantly, it wouldn't necessarily be an issue. But when it's left like that, there's that timeframe that lasts where you don't know when something's gonna happen. And if are they gonna come back, we don't know. Um, although I did actually doing on the work or doing work on the road, I'd have to verify with the lawyer and the insurance whether or not we're allowed to do that. You can investigate that further.
Uh, I hate to recommend that we do that, but I think it's important that that, you know. We're all trying to be cooperative and come to a decent uh solution, but I would hate to go through that effort, put this in place and then find. Heaven forbid, somebody's cleaning the road in in good conscience and good faith and. Somebody pulls out the pass and makes you know the head of collision and we all find ourselves in court. And if we find out that legal says, yeah, you need to be concerned about things like that, then we need to start to give our minds to, alright, how, but what process are we gonna put in place? You know, do we have to coordinate with the public works to say, okay, it needs to be flagged, even if the farmer's gonna go on Cleveland Road, we at least need to provide the flag man or. Who knows? I don't know what those things are. And if we don't even have to worry about it, great. But. Like I say, we live in a modern world where we have to think of who's gonna come and get us. You know, if if they see a payday opportunity. So I think we need to have those answers. Thanks.
That's great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that in my world. My world, if you're trying to make a road safer. Common sense would would come to into play that you're trying to make your road safer, you're not gonna be sued. So like. It's just common sense for a farmer to. If they're putting mud on the road as huge amounts. They would get take their front end loader and I'm sure every farmer's got a front end loader and take. Take the mud off the road as best they can. And if they do the best they can, they've done their due diligence and we've done our due diligence with. Thing and I think that just forget about it. Just. Have the farmers take it off the road. Be done. Goodbye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, we got a lot of good farmers here in our township. And I.
You're responsible.
Responsible part, yeah, yes. Some good farmers of that. And I I do know the one that actually he does come back and he scrapes off the uh. The mud from what he takes out of the field and on to on to streets in the village of Lynn. And uh give me credit for that. It's unfortunate. Sometimes we only get the odd one, but I I do believe. Uh, that our public works technical compliance advisor has the right uh. Uh, that, uh, our public works technical compliance advisor has, uh, the right, uh, direction to go with. Having something in place so we can have something to fall back on, uh, as Mayor Burrow alluded to. You know, if someone else is out there scraping and, and there's a car accident, who's a liability, who's at fault? Um, but I, I think majority of the farmers are, are, are good enough to go back and, and try to clean up. We do know and we are well aware of this situation. It's not the first time something's made to this council chamber, so. I think going forward and blocking the public works. We're, uh. Taking the ball and cleaning it up. And with the rain we had that night, the next morning the sun came out and it looked like a brand new road yet. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment on the situation. We just, uh. I take the road all the time. It was up green road in Brockville, like, uh. Right in front of Shell, there's a big, big corner there. And there's a new road that I put in there. And then putting that new road in there, there quickly became. Inches of mud on it. And I, I, I'm sure through the MTO, I'm sure the city and lots of municipalities that have this. This kind of thing in place and it's just there's, it was quickly rectified and city brought it because it's, it's again. Whether it's farm or whether it's construction doing, it doesn't matter who's doing it, there's rules in place that. You need to get it cleaned up and buried because they, they got cleaned up and buried in the city. So I'm sure we have, uh. Access to the people in other municipalities that either go through this or, or we would have to the MTO.
Just got a question on gravel versus pavement. That the thing, gravel, this pavement and how would you clean it up off the ground?
Sure, hold on, I can understand. So you're asking what the cleanup operation would have been versus with the two different plates?
Yeah.
So the gravel would have been a lot worse. Would have been quicker in one sense, which would have used a grader, but we're gonna scrape it off, but we're taking a lot of gravel with it. So then we've been buying gravel to put back on top of it to bring it back up to where we had to take off.
So my question is, how would you clean? As a farmer, how is a farmer cleaning a ground?
Well, they won't be able to, I guess.
Uh, okay.
It is that one.
But it wouldn't be ad hoc, maybe, don't you?
Yeah, that much wouldn't have been.
How would you get that much?
Um. Um, tires of this, why?
Oh, I bet you had duly, so, yeah, okay.
I think it's a big, same tires, I think, that's massive. Obviously.
So, anyone else? I feel like we're going on a recommendation now. Yeah, right? All those in favor? That is carried. Alright, good along. Park updates four point eight and your first twenty four dash twelve. And it's just to receive the report, if I could get a mover and a second, you would please counsel it up, councilor. And if you have any further comments, questions, concerns? But maybe she has something to say. No, it was just very English.
It looks very party. It's, I love the park. It's cute and, and I like the picture you sent of the pickleball. What's the little flowers in the scent? It's hot.
I tried it.
I looked at the fourth square. He said, it's got the fourth square. It's one, two, three, four. What do you do on that? It's a bobby. Oh, okay. So it's not something I'm familiar with. Sorry. But I, I like the. I'll have to go play hot scratch with the.
Have you played with the ball yet?
Have I any?
No. You should try it.
Thank you. I'll play with you. Sounds like a challenge. Counselor, ready?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, seeing, uh. Our coordinators here tonight, I've been. Had a question I wanted to ask her for quite a while. Uh, can you tell me? How many events were scheduled for the racetrack agreement this summer?
Not that I know. It was not a book.
Pardon?
It was not a book this year.
None, it's one of the two things. Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Um, we had this discussion before, we said we're gonna purchase the nets. And if I recall, we're purchasing nets to be, uh, be put up and left up. Uh, so people could use them whenever they wish. Uh, can our recreation coordinator please explain that situation?
So yes, originally that's what the plan was gonna be and then we came back with another report to save the expense of putting in permanent ones. And then we wouldn't be able to use this space for anything else.
So basically, we're, we're having our residents, citizens. They wanna use the place, you'll have to go over the story, sign stuff out. Instead of that being permanently there. Usable at all times. And now we're going to have. Being restored up out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To you, to our recreation coordinator, is there any updates? On the, uh, pre English as for the racetrack, anything that would be done, just gonna go to the rest of it, whatever light it has.
Uh, it's not, right now, there's no plans, but it should, it could be. I have had no request for it.
There's, we, I think over there we've had. What's that? New dog with its stand, we had a new pavilion. And then it just seems like everything else is there is just going on. Anyways, I guess that's for another day or another source, another day.
Was the senior team playing out there? There's some?
The management, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm assuming that you, when you try to say racetrack, you mean for the little.
Yeah.
Little cars. But I thought the whole idea of that was not to have to book it, that you could just go out after school and race your little vehicle on there or whatever. A- and so why would you call the township office to say, can I go play in the park? Would you have to do that with any other park? It doesn't, I'm, I'm not following this conversation sometimes. I've lost it.
I just saw. If they had a rally or a, call it whatever you wanna raise. How many times was a thing booked? And I don't think that was a hard question to answer.
Okay, I get it. So you're looking for something that was organized versus somebody just going there and using it.
Yeah, that's.
We wouldn't know.
You go in there today, five times, who's gonna know? Nobody, nobody.
But if we just let it go, it's full of weeds. Yeah, so I was just gonna say something else and it probably would have been polite, but why would, why are we letting it go? Why is it not, at least have the grass cut off it? Isn't it supposed to be gravel or something? Especially for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Um. May I suggest that, um, for the next, in the whole meeting. We have a recreational report on all our parks. And, uh. Explain what needs to be done in our parks. I don't wanna sit here tonight and go through it. But there's work to be done. Things that should have been done, I won't go there. For next committee report, I hope to have something that we've been discussing going forward in budget discussions. Thank you.
Yeah, I actually don't, but based on your suggestion, um, I'll keep my, my thoughts, uh, on ice until. That opportunity, because I think that'd be a, a better time to speak for it, so we keep that.
To activate. If you're gonna say what needs to be done, shouldn't we have a, what it's gonna pop, do it?
Well, yeah. It's all a show, but yes, I expect that.
Well, you can't just, you can't just have it up here. You gotta verbalize it and otherwise.
We need that approved.
You might not get the information.
One of those lines then, could we get a report? Of some chit chat convenience as to the amount of times that people have requested. Uh, you should put it on, like, and, and if they're satisfied with that range, then give it's going well for them.
Sorry, just to understand if that case for the report, you're looking for our parks to be master planned in a month?
No, sorry, no, I didn't ask for that amount. For the parks we have presently.
Yeah.
For example, start off with, um, Blaine Healy. And then, uh, the Green Bush Ballpark, uh, Douglas, uh. Clifford Hall Park and all these words, right? Douglas A. Scott Memorial Park. Uh, there are, there are three parks that are used very, very much so by the citizens, residents and visitors. Um, and there's things to be done in, in these parks. Um, that is, that is what we need. Um, we shouldn't have to, as a council, sorry, for a committee, uh, shouldn't have to come to a meeting like this, um. And some of us know what, what is, should be taking place. Sometimes we get, um, requests by a resident. Uh, and, uh, so anyways, all I'm saying is that hopefully in the next meeting, we don't usually have these meetings monthly. But next meeting, the whole meeting, we need something. So we can say, all right, now we know what needs to be done in this park, let's try to budget it and move forward. There's, there's work to be done and it just hasn't been done.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just to, to follow on from where, uh, Council Smith was talking about, and I hope for, I alluded upon clarity, correct me if I'm wrong. I think what you're thinking about, same thing I'm thinking about, ongoing maintenance aspects. So, so when you go and take a look at the condition of the, the whole control racetrack. Um, if the weeds have been told early in the season, then I think the people that do use it would have been able to keep up to it. I do know there were a couple of people that, that went there and their cars just wouldn't get through what's there. Um, you know, the, the basketball court, the, the weeds were going up through there. I think those are the types of things that the counselor Smith is talking about. We need to assess. The parks that are getting used and, and what would it take to properly maintain the assets that we have? Rather than see us get onto the course that, that this council over the last couple of years has tried to correct, right? Getting our, our, uh, parks and our recreation program back up the snub. And I don't wanna see it sliding down a little bit. So it's, it's the maintenance aspect rather than a, a master. I don't think that was ever correctly the concept.
I apologize. I just, I'm new, so I can help get to what you want.
Uh, I just wanna clarify, uh. Ask Mr. Smith what he's saying here. Is it just the three or do you wanna elicit all of the parks?
Um. I just named the parks that are mostly active, utilized the most of. Um, I know we all have other small parks within municipality. But, um. I think we, I think we gotta start at the top. Let's look at our big, big parks that are utilized the most and let's get to back what it should be.
Okay, well, we should still have a list of all of them.
Yes, and we do. Correct. We have that info. I believe we have that information on the old recreation master plan. But all I'm looking at is maintenance right now.
Yeah.
But we, we don't.
Please.
Madam Chair, just a, just a comment, and I'm gonna make this, this, this council's gonna continue on to progress the term, future council. Just, just a comment on the pickleball court is one thing there now, but that thing. There's an opportunity there to see if, if, if that is a real productive program that we, we could use one or two of these things. You know, we, this has gone up many, many times over the years, many, many times of this. What are we gonna do with these folks to say about stories? And then we came up with this program and it, and it may still go through and then. But there's, there's an opportunity. And, and if we're still in that process to some of the recreation items that will be on that facility, if that goes forward. And it, and it's important right now and some of these things that we are doing, there is, if they go off work, then it's a prime example. But it is time to start looking at these items and moving forward. With that one there, on, on that website thing for the trap. I, I'm still getting, I can almost pull that phone up right now and see the clicking on there of the people from the trap and the questions of the ones for that. And there it says, it's disgusting, to say the least. I'm sorry, but it's disgusting. So that's my comments on that. Thank you.
Honest positive note through your chair to our recreation coordinator. Uh, great job. Sold program this year. Sold out most of the time. Uh, I don't think we're shut down, were we? There you go. There's another one to us. Um, but thank you for all the.
Anyone else? All right, so all is under, everything is good. It's true. We allow four point nine, report point four dash thirteen, the community tree. Need a mover in a second to receive that and that the committee of the whole recommend that council provide directions to receive a translated tree at Lynn. Douglas A. Scott Junior Memorial Park. Over to, um, council, council. That, sir, any further comments from you, sir?
Yes. The person who's been, uh, in that park most of my life, um, not a lot of ground, um, a lot of rocks. So, um. Hopefully, you find the right spot for the tree, um, and, uh. And hopefully it'll provide, uh, additional shade for, for people. Um, because if, if you're in the park, you know, there's not a lot of shade around that park. But, uh, anyways, kudos to the, uh, individual who wants to donate for free or whatever and. Hopefully you can find the right spot. But I just wanna say there is a lot of rock, uh, the boulders in that, uh, area.
There wasn't a whole lot of dirt either, but we did the same thing, so we planted it. Little tree and now it's huge. But if we planted it, so we could decorate it every Christmas. And this has been going on for quite a few.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just at a, an event recently, actually, uh, a reunion at the Lynn Publicity. Uh, and one of the comments that I made there was how, how important it is to communities to have things like schools or, you know, the corner store. And, and here is, uh, living proof of the revitalization that can happen when all those gets reestablished. So. Kudos to, um, uh, to Chit Chat, uh, for being so community oriented, uh, stepping up, doing things either on their own or in partnership with, uh, with the township. It was great to have the tree lighting opportunity last year. Um, and I would really look forward to, to seeing something like this live on permanently in the park. As Counselor Smith says, if you can find the right spot and the right type of tree, it'll break through the, break through the Canadian shield. But, um. But yeah, ma- many thanks to, uh, to Chit Chat for what they've done for, for that village. I think there's, uh, there's a new life and, and pulse in, uh, in the village. It's great to see. Thank you.
All those in favor? It's scary. With the correspondence, like we want the city Brockville Water Systems Quarterly Report, made in January. We're going to receive finals, so I need a mover second there, but the committee recommends to have a look and see if Brockville Water Systems Quarterly Report we receive in a month. Anyone else have anything else? Any comments and feedback? All those in there? Yeah, this is. Informational items, the first one was mine, but I'm going to bring it back on the next meeting because I'm gonna bring more information. So I'm, we'll just get that, if that's okay. Six point two, proposed date change of November council meeting, November eleventh. So we need a mover and a second there for this one. That the committee all recommend that the council, to, to the losing town, hit the amendment of the two thousand twenty four council committee calendar to reflect that the first. Council meeting, number will be held on the twelfth of twenty twenty four to recognize remember it's day. Transferred by Counselor Schmidt and second by Counselor Gray. Do you want to make people good?
I certainly, uh, understand the intent and, uh, I'm not sure if I can go forward or not because I'm not available the next minute. That's my issue. So, all of a sudden, but only because I physically can't be here, but I, whatever council wishes on, I won't be able to zoom in either.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So through you, I have a question to, to staff. Was there an opportunity to survey what others are doing? Is this apparently common practice or are we. Pouring a little bit of new ground here?
No, it is a common practice and most municipalities, particularly those that are unionized, are, the offices actually closed that day and many members have responsibilities within the community. We actually are obviously non-unionized and are open that day, but just in recognition of the significance of the day, typically council meetings are deferred and when we were developing the calendar of the year, it was simply missed. But just in recognition of the significance of the day, typically council meetings are deferred and when we were developing the calendar of the year, it was simply missed. Um, so we 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 are happy to have a meeting on that night, but we were more thinking of you and your obligations in the community.
Okay, thanks. Not curious. I could add, I I don't want to challenge anybody, but what about four? You're missing one and two. Through you, Madam Chair. So once a seat is declared vacant, does that then affect? Form so that our numerator changes by one?
No.
Sorry, denominator changes by one?
No.
All right. So so I would be available on on either night. Do others know what this one?
I think I got a flubber of that name, but I'm sure.
So it looks like we have minimum four. That's a good point. Thanks.
Are you going to do it virtual or not at all? Okay, so we don't have enough?
No, this doesn't look like we'd be right on the range, right? Uh, Counselor, were you going to be able to this Tuesday night or not?
The twelfth of November.
Well, the risk would be if we commit, based on that four now, if somebody's sick, we're going to fall and then not have a council meeting at all. Um, so.
You could just have one council meeting that one, one committee at a whole, one council.
Okay. Uh, when do we plan on bringing, sorry, manager, I don't need to be.
Oh, absolutely.
This is just a follow, this is through you. Um. So so logistically, when do we anticipate the budget would be starting? Like, I just want to make sure I'm comfortable with only having the one meeting other than those transitional things into the next year.
Right. So I think at minimum, probably the director of finance won't have budgets up until probably a committee, the whole meeting on November eighteen.
All right. Okay, fair, fair enough. And I'm okay just having the the one if that's council's desire to.
Yeah, I won't be here because I'm going to be going up there.
There you go.
That's, that's why I'm so tall, I'd beat you down.
I don't think a motion is required then.
All right, so we'll move into public question here. Is there any questions? There's been nothing received yet.
I was hoping, have I, have I included any information over?
Absolutely, I should laugh, sorry.
And then this is a request, uh, I guess to the mayor. Um, I read a magazine here. And uh, this Merrickville, this is a local print out of the village and uh, you know, there's a United Counties of Leeds and Grebel update. From the mayor of uh. Uh, Merrickville, and and I I think I asked a year ago and I'll ask again, if sometime we could have some report from you as to. Some topics on the agenda or something that I've accomplished at the United Counties. If I totally trust your your representation of us there, um, I sometimes feel like. Uh, we could be involved in some of the discussions, giving you some uh, information or some ideas as to some of the topics that are going on there. And so that my neighbors are somewhat represented in that decision. So I I'm asking you or encouraging you to find a way to uh, give us a little. Monthly or bi-monthly update of what has happened, what might happen, or what's on the agenda. Right? That's my request. Because it it currently can go public somewhere.
Yes.
So uh, and and you're my contact with that and and ask me. All right.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, I have the, I came here tonight, uh. I have some concerns about killing it. I don't have a copy of the agenda and my computer is shot, so I couldn't find out. But I sent, I'll just mention it and I'll send an email, so I hope I get it on the next uh, meeting if you have. Uh, last spring, you and I corresponded a couple of times with email about speedlight, uh, those electronic speed. And I think they really work. And the traffic in Toledo is totally ridiculous. The way they they don't even stop at stop signs. I almost got hit the other day. Just got the stop sign by City Road, right? This car just flew right on through. And they're not stopping and something's got to be done. We haven't had as many kids in Toledo. That live right into it, not being busted or anything like that, uh, in years. All the time I've been there. We've got so many of them and with that, twenty fourteen, that so-called single dwelling of eleven units in it. Uh, they park out on the street, they have garbage dumped, uh, and it blows all the, yeah, it's a mess. And uh, the kids are walking on the street and the kids, these are young kids and then they run ahead of their parents and they run out on the street. And I have to act, to be honest, if I parked my car in my backyard. And and the truck in the backyard, so I can't see what's going on on the road because it's scary out there. They just go flying through. So I wanted to bring, I was hoping that would be mentioned as you said, uh, told me that hopefully something would happen this fall. I was hoping this would be the meeting that just, we're going to do it, but I'll send it to get it on the next uh, agenda for that. And I think something's got to be done by that twenty fourteen, I was, because I've been to the police on it. The police said they've had so many reports. Uh, they have a dumpster there. And they fill it up with them. It's so full that every time there's a west wind, it's down in my ditch. And the people that we have on maintenance for the Legion, we're picking it up in the ditch and that all the time and it's. You know, anyway, that's, I'll send that out, but I mean, I tell you, it's it's pretty bad out there right now. It's the speeding that's going on and. And I'm more concerned about the little kids, that there's a lot of uh, kindergarten kids that are blocking the school, you know, and it's, it is scary.
We're just going to ask for a new address.
Name an address, please, just open it.
Uh, Greg Williams and three eighteen County Road. Right next door to the Legion.
Through you, Madam Chair, to bring, just, we have a couple of those, the electronic speed signs. Pretty sure we have to, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Please, to everybody. Uh, so the issue is, this is a county road, so we may have to refer the matter to Ken Castleman. At the Frankel Program. They have signs as well, but because it's can or one, can or eight, we have no jurisdiction over that little way. So just to follow up, if they don't have any available, could we ask him if it was okay if we used tires in the end?
I I think those signs really work. If they don't have any available. So it's council that you're going to approach, uh, Ken or do I approach you, Ken, or what?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I already spoke to the uh, public works people, maybe not low enough down the chain, if I can uh, put it that way. Uh, so it may have fallen off the end of somebody's desk. The problem, uh, as I think I responded back to you is that, just like we have. Part of a waiting list, they have to be there for a period of time to actually do any work, uh, like do any good. And so at the time, even hours were already predetermined for a sequence of of roads. So even if we had been willing to put hours up. There are already four or five roads ahead of, ahead of you. Uh, and it was the same thing at the, at the time with the counties, but I'm, I'm happy to follow up with them again because. I think you should be bubbling pretty close to the top of the list by now.
You want to?
Yep. So we're adjourned in public meeting. Let them know that we won't be. Okay, so we're heading into a close meeting and we won't be returning. So the close meeting is on eight point one, one matter under section two, three, nine, two. Two, A, personal matters about an unjustifiable individual, including municipal and local board employees, specifically interim C O, covered in staffing. As well as eight point three, one matter under section two, three, nine, two, C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board on certain. And section two, three, nine, two, F, advise that in subject to the solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Specifically between cap business park. When you move on a secondary about the regular committee meeting adjourned at seven twenty P M for a close meeting. Regarding the one matter under section two, three, nine, two, B, personal matters, what I think about. Individual, including municipal board, employees, specifically interim C O and staff. And one matter under section two, three, nine, two, C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality. Or local board and section two, three, nine, two, F, advise that is. Subject to solicitor client privileges, including communications necessary for that purpose, specifically to cap business park update. Counselor Smith and Mayor Burrow. All those in.